Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Communications, do I have a blanket motion?
Some of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
I know Alderman Parker, do you want one, number two?
Yes, number two. I'd like to...
And how about five, Mayor? Can we talk about that?
Four and five. And then I'd just go ahead and like to point out number three. So just hold that one too. So...
We'll just read all of them.
Almost. One, actually, let me just say the ones that I don't think we need to take individual action with. So it'd be the blanket motion right here to one. And six, seven, eight, and nine. One, six, seven, eight, and nine. Has anybody objected there? The motion then is approved, is submitted at one, six, seven, eight, and nine. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right. With that, on number two, Alderman Parker, which is... Go ahead and read that by title and then...
Yes, sir. It's a memorandum from Alderman Parker to the members of the city council regarding a proposed barricade of West Scenic.
Would anyone like to hear about this? It's, in my day-to-day activities, I had an opportunity to speak with a lot of the folks that live up there in my neighborhood. And their concerns and mine are very similar. And I'd just like to bring it to the council's attention that we feel that by putting an end to the cut-through traffic on West Scenic Drive, that we can improve our quality of life, eliminate some of the litter problems and traffic problems on the hill, and do so in a way that wouldn't encumber or cause any undue inconvenience for anyone. At one time, the location of this barricade was the entrance to the federal property of Fort Roots. It has since become public property and is now developed in the form of multifamily dwelling apartments and the Pulaski-Votec School. Pulaski-Votec administration has indicated to me that it would be in keeping with their policy in the very near future to close Scenic Drive to access to the campus to make it more pedestrian-friendly. So any objections coming from anyone would certainly not be the Votec administration. The people of Scenic Hill, at least those that I've talked to, that would be most affected by this would be the residents of West Scenic Drive, Avalon, and Floral, which are the cut-through streets giving access through the neighborhood. And without a doubt, ninety-nine point nine percent of those individuals are strongly in favor of this. And only those who, that are indifferent, would live in streets and cul-de-sacs that are not directly affected by the cut-through traffic. However, I think there is a petition being circulated now among the residents, and I would expect by the time we bring this to the council's consideration that we would have a public hearing scheduled for the first meeting in June to discuss with the general public their feelings, pro and con, and at that time, read this in the form of a resolution.
Let me, if I could, Alderman, I know Alderman Parker contacted me about a week ago and indicated his interest in bringing this issue forward. I suggested that he might want to point this out to the council and have a public hearing. I know that we've got police, fire, emergency services, as well as, you know, to the extent that there are sanitation routes. You know, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly how this might impact if that blockage were to occur in a positive or a negative way, but I wanted to make sure that as we went forward with this and trying to analyze that, that, you know, our city services, you know, be able to understand what's going on and, to the extent that it has an, could have an adverse effect, comment on it as well as any of the others who might be using that area to traverse. I know that Alderman Parker is absolutely correct, that the more activity that goes on up on, you know, with Pulaski Technical College, as well as the veterans facility up there, when the roadwork is done, will definitely continue to have an impact. And I'm not sure what would be the best way to deal with that, although the best way, I think, is do it with everyone's eyes wide open. I know Tim Marvin, I'm gonna make sure he has an opportunity to take a look at what impact that might make, if any. And so, you know, I applaud Alderman Parker's efforts, and as we go forward, we'll find out better what may or may not have a pro or, pro or con effect on this effort.
I just think it's in the best interest of the citizens of Scenic Hill and peace of mind to at least have this issue brought to the table and discussed. I understand this is not the first time it's been brought up, and there were issues previously that prevented them from moving forward, but I believe whatever those issues might be, if we discuss them with an open mind, that we can overcome them or bring this thing to a conclusion with reason and good judgment in the very near future.
Alderman Parker, if it's your desire, either the next council meeting or the one following, and I'll be happy, you know, certainly it's your suggestion to call for a public hearing on this issue of fairly, fairly defined, and that's essentially closing off West Scenic between four and five hundred block, if I'm...
Five and six hundred.
Five and six hundred block. And this council would, in my mind, be the one to make that decision, as it would affect all of us, certainly those people that live in that, in that neighborhood. Next council meeting?
We can discuss it at the next council meeting, or a public hearing the next council meeting would be fine.
Without objection, then, I'll go ahead and schedule a public hearing, and I want to make sure all the department heads who have an interest with regard to this, the closure of this thoroughfare, which becomes, is becoming more and more of a thoroughfare, you know, be able to comment as to how it may affect their operations and in terms of our delivering of services to that area. Seven oh five, next council meeting, then the public hearing on this issue will be before the council. Do you want to go ahead and ask for that to be accepted and filed?
Yes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Ms. Whitby on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number three?
Just go ahead and read it by title.
Yes, sir. This is a letter from Eric Hergit, Senior Vice President of Repsonman Insurance. It is regarding a check in the amount of sixty-three thousand two dollars, which is from a no-claims bonus on a policy.
What I wanted to point out, can I go ahead and get a motion to accept and file?
Per moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is, this clause apparently is not standard, but it certainly is beneficial to us that it was in there, and that is, you know, since we've experienced no claims over the last several years, we are in a position to receive this sixty-three thousand dollar check. The letter compliments the Electric Department, Joe Gertsch, I know is out of town with working on some issues related to Big Cajun, but I want to, on behalf of a grateful community for sixty-three thousand dollars, thank the Electric Department for the effort that they put in on this. Ron, we appreciate it, and keep up the good work. Well, although we want that thing genin' as much as we can. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number four?
Why don't we sort of blend number four in with Mr. Rhodes? Are you ready to go ahead and make your presentation? Well, actually, we've got two things. I know, let's just go ahead and deal with, why don't you come up and explain number four, and then we'll go, we'll still do your presentation right after this.
Okay. Could I have the screens, please?
Sure. Whoever the...
Oh, there we go. What I have as far as correspondence, number four, is we're talking about the Burns Park Rocket Slide. Currently, we've had to close that slide due to some people being injured on that. It is, I said, we, I said almost fifty years old. The actual date, age is thirty-seven years old, but we've repaired that numerous, numerous times and have tried to keep it because it's been, had historic value to the community. But what we have, or what we're proposing, is a new slide. It is also a rocket slide type.
Excuse me, while you're making that presentation, Mr. Boils, come up here a second, and I need to ask you a question. Go ahead.
But this is the front view of that, that slide. It has several slides on there, there's actually four. Again, as you can see, if you remember the looks of the rocket slide, it's a similar. It is, Miracle was also the company that made the original rocket slide that we put in in nineteen sixty-nine. What I'm asking for is a voice vote to give us permission to proceed on the purchase of this and the installation of this, and then we'll bring back legislation to do that formally like we're supposed to.
Want to tell us why we're asking the council to take a shortcut?
Right. It is a, we've looked around, this is the only thing, this is the closest and similar thing to this. You cannot just go out and, there's nobody else that we've found that has anything similar to this. So it's a single-source bid, and the actual cost is ninety-nine thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars when rounded off. What, we're, we're not asking for any new money, we're, we, at this point in time, we're using some money we had allocated at Burns Park for two rest, to upgrade two restrooms at Burns Park. Also, there was a playground in the RV park, which we have decided, based on the clientele there, mostly they're, they're senior citizens, so they don't need a, need, need the playground, and then also a piece of equipment, but that's how we propose to pay for that at this time. So that would be out of the hamburger capital budget that already exists, and it's, it's a line item that says Burns Park. At some point in the future, we'll probably be coming back and wanting you to support those items that we had to get rid of, but this is the front view of that slide, but...
Well, why are we not bringing this legislation up? Why are we asking for a voice vote? Because we want to get...
I wanted to be sure you wanted to do this, but either we're gonna have to tear it down and get rid of it, or replace it with something like this. And so, single source, only one...
I understand waiving the bids. What I'm, what I'm asking is, is why are we in an expedited way in, in asking the council to voice vote? Is it, I mean, will we be able to get it installed?
We'll be able to get it installed in thirty to forty-five days. Currently, we've closed the, the rocket slide at Burns Park. So that's also the reason for expeding.
Now, the commission has endorsed this...
The commission has reviewed this and has endorsed this proposal.
Any questions?
Mayor, what's gonna happen to the old rocket slide? It's gonna be hauled off.
Scrapped. We will put this one back in that, that same location.
I think there's a fear, and you can help amplify this, that that might very well be an attractive nuisance. It's outlet, it's light, we don't want anybody hurt on it. There have been several kids that have been hurt recently.
That little slide is, keeps, the surface keeps bending up, breaking, and constant replacement. People are cutting, have been cutting their legs. The new code, the, they're called entrapments, but you can, if, they're only supposed to be four inches wide now, or a person can get between those, which these are further, they were grandfathered in, but you can get between those and fall some thirty feet to the ground, things like that. So it's just, it's become obsolete.
We have had some injuries recently, haven't we?
Yes, right.
There a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion made and seconded to authorize the Parks Department to move forward with the acquisition of this piece of equipment, and that legislation will be brought back in confirming this at the next meeting. Any further discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number five?
Please read it.
This is a memorandum dated May third, two thousand and six, to Mayor and City Council from Robert Boils. The location, the subject is the location of Pike Avenue Roundabout and proposed new roadway alignment. Attached is the proposed alignment from McClelland engineer, engineers regarding the roadway that will replace River Road in support of proposed new substation west of Pike Avenue along the Arkansas River. This proposed collector road was added to the master street plan several months ago and will replace River Road as the primary route west from Pike Avenue south of the Bering Cross neighborhood.
Let me, Mr. Boils, you want to come up just real quick? Can I get a motion and second?
Solo.
Second.
You know, as, as we know, we've got, that area is under study to try to define a, a new connector that would join River Road with Pike Avenue and essentially bypass the old River Road coming in somewhere around Paul Duke Drive, if I'm not mistaken. While this does not exactly lay out the line, it's very close and it's a beginning. We've been working with, you know, Ms. Farrell, who is one of the prime developers in that area that wants to have a planned new community, and we wanted to bring this to the council's attention. We're not asking for any vote or anything tonight, but there's a good likelihood we'll be bringing legislation in. You know, once the road is set, then, you know, subject to the council's direction, we're gonna be, you know, moving in the direction of, you know, perhaps beginning the acquisition right away. And so, you know, we wanted to get this before you as soon as we could, and then if there are any questions or any concerns, you could raise that. We're looking at the roundabout as one of the methods of, of having traffic access River Road and Pike Avenue and, you know, the new alignment. So, you know, if, if you've got any concerns, please ask them as we move forward, because we're gonna try to move this down the road. They're, we're all very interested in, in trying to make something happen in, in that Bering Cross area. Any comments?
One question. Mr. Boils, I'm sure that, that it shows no connection on to River Road or what would be...
Right.
...the entry to River Road off of that roundabout.
The subdivision is under study. They did recommend, they are considering more of a gridded system and more connections to Bering Cross through some of the local nearby streets, but the decision of how that specific alignment, they've agreed on the first three blocks going west from Pike. And so at this point, we wanted to ask the state to consider the roundabout as an option there at that location. At some day, the River Road will be replaced with some through route that would cut through the neighborhood in some acceptable way, but there's been a lot of questions as to where the alignment might be. This is pretty much identical to what you approved a few months ago.
Obviously, my initial one was that it, and you've done, this one has done that. It's, it goes from, goes from Riverfront Drive or Pike Avenue to the property at one of the shortest spots.
Right.
But yet it goes, goes north of a, of a property split that's in there. So that means that those people who live, because you've got probably, there are at least one house site that starts before the Farrell development, and they've gotta have access back into that also. So as you look at this, I mean, this is fine with me. I'd hoped it would go a little closer to Third Street, but it appears it's not gonna do that.
Well, that's why we wanted to get it to you.
But you've got, you've got a lot of activities right now that continue to go on down here, and if you put that roundabout and don't have an access on the River Road, there's some activities there, plus you've got the old tank farm there that we've gotta have some kind of access, and right now, that's off of that road, and there's three or four acres in there for development that's on the river also.
The general goal, or the general idea is to try to get better use of the riverfront for people and relaxation and recreation.
We agree on that.
But we would not, we would not close River Road until some route is established.
Okay.
But this is, came from their McClellan Engineering, hired by them. It's very identical to what we proposed for that first portion of the street, and we wanted to get it to the state as soon as possible to get their consideration.
Okay.
So that was Thomas, just a second.
I guess, the only question I had, those businesses and, and that area, they're aware of what we're doing here, and they're in agreement with that, is that right?
Only through the paper. We've not made contact with the neighborhood at this point. We're not at the point of, we don't have a real design, so we're a little early, but I did want to get you as much information as soon as possible.
Alderman Height?
Mr. Boils, I'd love to see River Road converting to nothing but a bike and pedestrian trail, but that's not realistic thinking. Long-range planning, you'll have, you'll have access to River Road for those businesses, plus the fact, down toward that little Riverview Park down there, you've got people that are needing to get down there for the skateboard park and to access a picnic area down there. Is that in the plans to, to, to maintain a connection to River Road?
Yeah, the concept would be to build a road of some sort, maybe circuitous, to keep it from being a fast, fastly traveled route around and through the neighborhood, the new neighborhood, to River Road. But of course, you have Paul Duke Drive that does provide direct access, and it'll remain.
So that it is realistic to think then, that us bikers and pedestrians will not have to have the fear of those cars and vehicle traffic going down River Road?
That's a big part of the proposal.
Great.
To try to convert it to something like that.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Alderman Witcher?
Okay. Regarding the, the roundabout, how many cars would this handle on a daily basis? And how many cars are going through there now?
I, I don't know if Tim Marvin's here. I think it's around thirty thousand cars a day that travels Pike Avenue, average daily traffic. This is shown to be capable of carrying it, but it's a four-lane roadway leading off with two-lane, you know, legs on the east-west route, so it is something that the state is not used to. We may have to, the approach lanes may have to be merged into a single lane, but we want to let the traffic engineers come up with the best plan to, to do that. Of course, it's a problem now with that weave and merge that you have today. It's a different concept. Traffic engineers say that it works, we haven't tested it.
You know, my only experience is in the District of Virginia, well, in the District of Columbia, I mean, Virginia. And I get lost on a regular basis on those things.
It'll be, it'll be a fairly simple design in that we're reducing it to four legs instead of having Pike continue south as with a five-leg type roundabout, so that helps. But I'm gonna leave it up to the traffic engineers to assess what they say is the best plan.
Agreed.
Thank you, Mr. Boils. Any further discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
I think that's all the communications except for one, and what I want to do is call, call the council's attention to this and tell you why that I'd like to ask for a, a, a voice vote. We'll bring this resolution back, having to do with the provisions of video services that are currently before the Congress, and I was, you know, each of you have a copy of this resolution. The city attorney's office has helped us in conjunction with staff of U.S. Conference of Mayors. I was on a conference call last week with some members of Congress, also spoke with our, the office of our own Congressman Snyder. The Congress is likely to deal, the full Congress on the House side, is likely to deal with the video cable, and I forgot, it's got a, you know, a title that, you know, is somewhat descriptive, that's moving through Congress right now, and they're essentially, you know, trying to take the right of franchising away from cities, along with some other activities and, and, and the opponents of, of, of the move that is supported in large measure by the telephone communication industry, and in fact, is opposed by the, by the cable, I guess, if I can, you know, just say is a bit of the battle of the big boys. Where we are, you know, is wanting to maintain our rights away, want to maintain our franchising abilities, and this is gonna come up in all likelihood, as we were told last week in this conference call before the Congress, the full, the House, this, this week. And as you look at this resolution, it's reasonably self-explanatory. It talks about, you know, the city being able to retain the current services that it has. Now, there is some pessimism that will be able to defeat the, the current bill, but there is some optimism that we might be able to have some reasonable amendments attached to it, and this resolution would go in encouraging not only our member of Congress, but all members of Congress to try to, you know, be mindful of, you know, the cities and, and the citizens in the services that we have and to maintain those integritys. So I'm not gonna ask for a vote on it right now, I'm gonna go ahead and ask Bob Rhodes to make his presentation, but then I'll be happy to answer any questions after that, and then I'll ask for a voice vote on that. Mr. Rhodes?
Okay, we wanted to come tonight and tell about one of our programs. I'm not gonna do that, I'm gonna let Jeff Kaplinger, who is our program supervisor, talk a little bit about the after-school program, and then one special program that they have going on, and then we want you to participate in that program. So Jeff?
Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you. To begin, the Parks and Recreation Department wants to thank you, Mayor Hayes, and the council for your support of our department's recreation programs. Our after-school program, Aspire for Short, currently serves about two-hundred-and-forty student, elementary students, using six staff and eight volunteers and three community centers. We're in the process of adding additional staff and volunteers to our program. Aspire strives, strives to provide our participants with a supervised, structured, and safe environment. Students are able to receive help with their homework, receive tutoring, and participate in other various activities, which include athletics, life skills, games, science, and arts and humanities. Last week, we celebrated Space Day by participating in the Student Signatures in Space Project. We are here tonight to invite you to participate with our students by signing a poster. Ernest Peoples, one of our program leaders, will tell you more about this project. As he's doing that, I would like to pass this poster around for you all to sign.
I know that there was some effort to make to have some council member sign it ahead of time. I know I haven't had a chance, so if you'll just start it coming around, and those that haven't, if you'd like to have your signature going into space, I think that's what we're about to find out.
Yes, sir. Basically, the Space Day program is a, is a, Space Day program is a program set aside to celebrate the achievements of space exploration. It was sponsored with NASA, the Lockheed Corporation, and several space advocacy groups. The Space Day program actually was celebrated May, May the fourth. We took that week of May the fourth to coordinate and correlate activities for the students to sort of give them some understanding of the Space Day and what it all entails. We also have this S3 program, which is the centerpiece of the Space Day program, and basically the S3 stands for Student Signatures in Space, as the mayor alluded to. And what we do with that, we take the poster that you see here that have been passed around, and we take it out to all the different sites where the children participate in this particular program, and have them to sign that, that poster. And upon signing that poster, which that date will end June the first, we will take that poster and mail it back to NASA. At that point, they will send that poster on the next space shuttle mission, and it'll go up in space, and it'll come back, and once it returns to us, we'll frame it and place it in one of our halls of, of recreation.
Now, this doesn't happen with everybody. We are...
No, sir.
Somewhat special.
Yes, sir, we are, very much so. We are the only state, Arkansas, we're the only recreation center in the state that participates in this program, as, that I know of, and I'm pretty sure that that is pretty accurate. We, the first program that they had dealing with this started in nineteen ninety-seven. That was the first actual S3 program. It had over two-hundred-and-twenty-two organizations to participate, it had over ninety, ninety-six Some of the, the, uh, countries that participated was in, were Australia, Austria, Belgium, Belize, Canada, Chile, China, Czech Republic, Denmark, England, France, Germany, Greece, Guam, Hungary, India, Israel, Italy, uh, just to name a few. But there are quite a few countries actually participate in this program. And what, what we like to do is not only recognize that, but recognize that this is an opportunity for the youth in the city of North Little Rock to broaden their horizons and open up the opportunity for them to see something outside of the norm of basketball, baseball. We're, we're really trying to incorporate a lot of things and make it a lot more diverse for our youth here in North Little Rock. So in saying that, I have three students here with me. They'll give testimonies about our Space Day program. And they are Tariq Spring, Chris Bell, and Melissa Bridwell. They'll give their testimony at this time.
Welcome. You wanna make sure you, we know who you are and, uh, and, and feel free to address the council?
Okay. Um, my name is Tariq Spring, and I participated in the Space Day program. And, um, I was interested about space because there's no gravity in there, in space. And, um, what I hope to learn in this program is about the new planet and how astronauts sleep in space.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My, good evening, Mayor Hayes and the city council. My name is Christopher Bell, and I'm representing Sherman Park Community Center, where Ms. Renee Henson is the director. When the, when this program was introduced to me, I was hoping to learn about space and NASA and its technologies by going to the space program. I wanted to learn and explore the interesting things about space and the galaxy we live in. Here are a few things that I, I have learned. I've learned that Neil Armstrong was the first American to set foot on the moon. Gunion L. Bluefoot Jr. was the first African-American to enter space. Robert, Robert H. Lawrence Jr. was the first African-American astronaut. The first animal in space was a dog. I was so interested in what I had learned that day, that as soon as I got home, I looked up more things about space and the wonderful and interesting facts. I think that was a great opportunity to learn and embark on the incredible journey through space. That's what I learned, which inspires me to learn more about the world beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a good report.
My name is Melissa Bridwell. I first would like to thank the mayor and council members for allowing us to participate in the council meeting and allowing us to tell you what we know about space. I first got interested in space when I was reading about May Jimmison at school. When I read about what kind of research and projects they did in space, I was fascinated. I like to do a lot of projects and research, so I knew this would be interesting to me. That's what made me interested in space. I hope to learn about all the projects they do in space. I hope to learn all about what other research they do and what inspired astronauts to become an astronaut.
Thank you, and thank all three of you for, uh, your report. And, uh, Mr. Rhodes, on behalf of, uh, I'm sure the entire council, the community, thank you, your staff, uh, for helping us become involved in a really unique, uh, experience, a, a unique opportunity. Uh, but the uniqueness is the turning on the light bulbs in the minds of, of many of our kids and young people who, uh, certainly are reflected by the three that, uh, came up here tonight. So thank, uh, all of you for, uh, what you do day in and day out, and we very much appreciate having a chance to be a part of this real exciting program and the uniqueness of it as it applies to our community. Thank you very much.
Mayor Hayes and city council.
Alderman Bryant?
I've been fortunate enough to be at, uh, the rec centers during this tutoring program, and what he said is exactly what they do. I mean, they're, it's a structured program where the children are tutored and learned, and they're not, uh, running around playing basketball and chasing each other. They're literally sitting at tables and being instructed by these, uh, tutors that are, that are taking care of them. So it's a very, very well, well-worth program.
Let me, uh, uh, bring back, uh, this resolution and ask the council if you've had a chance to, uh, take a look at it. I'm gonna have to ask for a, a voice vote. The timeliness of it, uh, occurred after the filing deadline and, uh, and is gonna take place this week, if not already. So, uh, is there a, a, a desire by the council to move forward with this?
I'll make the motion, but, Mayor, I have a couple of questions, and, and this is probably the first piece of legislation that I've had to read all, read all the wheresses because the wheresses are part of the...
Therefor's.
Of the therefor's, and I've, I've obviously never seen that before. But there's a lot of things I've never seen before. If I understand right, this, Congress is debating a bill, uh, uh, between two groups who have very strong lobbyists in trying to take away the city's rights in regard to having some control, some control, as little as it may be, over our own city properties in regard to what goes on city property, what goes down our right-of-ways. And we're simply asking Congress to, don't take away the rights that we already have in regard to that.
That's basically correct. There's a, the, the biggest wheress, uh, you know, and obviously you're right, the language does incorporate the wheresses, goes on to indicate that there are certain things that we've been provided visa, via the cable industry, uh, that we are maintaining our rights we ought to have, uh, as these other communication opportunities move forward. For example, uh, government access channel, uh, educational, uh, uh, facilities that move into our schools, uh, programming, uh, access channel from government school facilities, free cable service to the schools, senior citizen, government facilities. We've got, uh, and enjoy, obviously, again, we're on, uh, uh, tonight, this, uh, council goes out over Comcast, and we've had a good relationship with them. So in, in addition to our right to franchise and, and certainly the funding that, uh, is a part of that, you know, there are other things that we receive in, uh, in a beneficial way that, you know, are moving down the, uh, legislative, uh, pathway, and, and we, we're very interested on behalf of not only ourselves, but the entire community of maintaining the current, uh, status that we have to talk to our citizens.
How does this fit in with this, I'll, I'll name the names, the cable providers and the telephone companies in providing services to a competitive service into a neighborhood?
We have been talking over the last six weeks with, uh, representatives from, uh, AT&T, formerly SBC, about, uh, uh, trying to reach a, a franchise agreement that would, uh, allow them to come into our city. Obviously, they're already in our city, uh, with telephone services, and, uh, and we don't charge a franchise fee on, on telephone, as we're all, uh, aware. Uh, the, the new service, uh, in terms of, uh, Internet Protocol TV, I, I guess that's the buzzword. Uh, I think, uh, Mall Mel just recently, uh, authorized a franchise agreement, uh, in this area. Uh, I know we've been, uh, through and, and in partnership with city attorney's office, uh, trying to negotiate something we felt would be beneficial to recommend to the council. And so we are in active discussions with, uh, uh, AT&T, as it was, formerly SBC. Uh, and at the same time, the same people, or at least the same company, is trying to move, uh, in, in Washington to get federal legislation that would preempt a lot of the things that we would, we're doing locally. So, you know, while we're talking to them on a local level about, um, maintaining a similar relationship that we have with the cable industry, they are also in Washington trying to do an in-run, so to speak. And, and this resolution would go in trying to, uh, move forward with some amendments that would maintain, uh, our, uh, beneficial, uh, position as it has been with the cable industry. So, you know, we're talking to them on one hand, but at the same time, in Washington, we're very much opposed to what they're trying to do. Now, Mr. Carter, you wanna add to this?
I think you've covered it, Mayor. I mean, uh, that's all the bases. We're still in ongoing negotiations, but there are competing forms of legislation, uh, in Washington right now. Uh, and, uh, there's just a desire to, to express what the cities want, what we want out there, and let our congressman know that.
And basically, what this, and you can add to that, Mr. Carter, if, if, if I'm an Arab, but basically, this is essentially saying the same things that we're currently enjoying in a beneficial way with the cable industry.
That's correct. AT&T maintains their position that no franchise is required for what is called IPTV. Nonetheless, they negotiate in good faith over agreements to use our easements to transmit IPTV. And we're, uh, progressing through negotiations to have a levelized playing field for all parties who are involved, whether it's the cable industry or AT&T, uh, whoever is providing the video service. That's what we seek, is a levelized playing field.
Alderman Whitaker? I mean, Alderman Gibson, or you?
I'm three.
Mayor, I might, might mention, uh, you and Mr. Parker and I were at the Congressional Cities Conference this year, and this was one of the big items on the National League of, uh, meetings. Uh, and, and this is consistent with the stance that we took in DC in March. Uh, today, the, uh, the grassroots campaign office of the National League was contacting folks on a local basis to encourage them to visit with the congressional staff. So this, this is timely for us.
There's a motion in second. Any further discussion? This is a motion to, uh, adopt this by voice, and it'll be brought back in at the next council meeting. Uh, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
Yes.
I think we're ready to go the agenda. Uh, I mean, the business section of it, uh...
New business, Resolution Oh-Six-Sixty-Six, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution reappointing Charles Lee Jones to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
Yes.
Resolution...
Jones is here. Raise your hand. We appreciate your service. We thank you for continuing, uh, on with, uh, helping Mr. Rhodes, uh, take care of, of an exciting group of people and, uh, and the services that we provide. So thank you very much.
I'd like, I'd like to thank. I had the pleasure of serving on the, on the Parks Commission with Mr. Jones, and he's an invaluable asset to the Parks Commission, and his insight and knowledge is, is, is wonderful for us. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
And we see some important reasons why what you do is benefiting us, uh, so, uh, thank you very much. Uh, next item?
Resolution Oh-Six-Sixty-Seven, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution appointing Kay Harden to the unexpired term of Carmen Fernandez on the Central Arkansas Transit Authority Board.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
Yes.
Don't think Ms. Harden's here, uh, but we wanna thank her for her service. Uh, Ms. Fernandez had a conflict, and, uh, we weren't able to resolve that, so, uh, you know, we, we like our public transit. Next item?
Resolution Oh-Six-Sixty-Eight, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution repealing, uh, Resolution Number Sixty-Nine Hundred condemning property located at South Fifty-Two-Sixteen Woodland Drive in the city of North Little Rock.
Uh, let me, uh, get a motion and then, uh...
Amendment, amendment to this one, I believe.
Excuse me?
There's an amendment to this one.
Okay, let's get a mo, get it on the table. And then, Mr. Boils, you wanna come up here? Motion, uh, made in second for adoption. Mr. Boils, where are you? Uh, I know Alderwoman Robinson was asking me a question. Tell me why we have this before us.
Code enforcement would be handling...
All right, I'm sorry. Then code? Wadley?
It's my understanding that, uh, there's an owner for the property, and this owner's counsel contacted the city attorney's office, and they worked out, uh, agreement on the purchase and the remodeling of the property.
Did they post any bond to do so?
We weren't involved, uh, referred to the city attorney's office. We did not talk with the buyer. The council talked with each other.
It's my understanding, I don't know whether a, a bond has been posted. I can't tell you that one has been posted. Uh, I, the last communication that I had was, uh, and I wasn't personally involved in the go, in the negotiations of it, but the Judge Humphrey was, I think he's the buyer of the property, uh, and, uh, which, uh, we felt that it would be rehabilitated. Uh, we feel like we have a trusting relationship with our circuit court judges.
Is there a timeframe?
I, I can't tell you that right off the top of my head. Now, this, of course, this is perfectly within the, uh, purview of this council. If you wish there to be a timeframe, you can certainly insert one in there.
I guess my concern is that this, uh, the city has tried to contact the owner of this property for close to two years, and each time, the owner has said, "I'm gonna fix it, I'm gonna take care of it, I'm gonna move back," and nothing has happened. We voted here on the city council to condemn the property, and then here we get legislation where we wanna repeal it. So, you know, we kinda need to know, you know, are we following procedure?
Let me, uh, let me go ahead and indicate this. Uh, you know, I know that, uh, that, you know, my name is on that, and I, I authorize the city attorney's office to bring certain things before the council, and, uh, and I appreciate the questions. Let me just hold this, and then we'll, uh, uh, seek a further definition or make it, make sure it's definitive as to, you know, what, what is intended to be done and outline that and set certain time, uh, frames, and, and we can come back in and, uh, perhaps amend this, uh, if it becomes more, we'll say, responsive to the council's concerns.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Next item?
Resolution Oh-Six-Sixty-Nine, Alderman Hyde and Whitaker.
Call it, please.
A resolution appropriating twenty thousand dollars from Ward Four Drainage Funds for the Extension of Fire Protection.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
Yes.
Ordinances, Ordinance Oh-Six Forty-Six, Mayor Hayes.
Uh, I'm gonna hold that, uh, you know, I, I file, ask the city attorney's office to file this. I know that we adopted Alderman Thomas's resolution indicating that we were, uh, wanted to wait until we had some definitive, uh, presentation to the council on cost, and certainly we intend to honor that. Uh, so this is simply to keep this before us. Uh, if there's, uh, any, uh, discussion that the council wants to have, I'll certainly, uh, you know, be, uh, uh, be appropriate to, to comment. But at this point, you know, it's my intent to, uh, to hold this. As you can see, there's no attachment, uh, as Exhibit A, which would actually outline what we would want the council to consider because we haven't, uh, anything, uh, to put before the council at this point. Uh, with that, uh, you know, we could either go to the next item, or if anybody wants to comment on our current status, uh, the electric department is moving forward, and, uh, if not, uh, by the end of this month, certainly the first part of next month, our game plan to, uh, have something, uh, to recommend to the council, or at least, uh, in terms of informing the council where we are in a more definitive way, uh, about our increased cost of power. Mayor, would it be appropriate to read it one time and hold it? Not, not really. Uh, you know, I, 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 you know, but since there's no attachment, and that's the meat and potatoes of it, uh, you know, we can, we can decide what we wanna do with it, uh, when there is, uh, the attachment, which is the principal thing. Uh, with that, uh, there are no other comments.
This is an ordinance establishing the Cypress Crossing multi-purpose municipal property owners improvement district number 26 of North Little Rock, first reading.
Mayor, move, suspend, rules placed on second reading, but doesn't this require a public hearing?
Second.
Here's the rule. Whenever that's first presented to the mayor, it has to be set for a public hearing within 15 days. Really, the only people who are parties to the hearing are the city and the improvement district owners. It's not an issue for the city as a whole. We're just the main two parties who are involved in it, and that's for the expedited hearing for, between us and the improvement district, and I believe they're present today. The council is present, I'm seeing a nod from the back.
So, what's your answer? Do we, there's a motion that's been made in second to suspend the rules. Let's, I tell you what, let's go ahead and suspend the rules. Let's get that out of the way, and then...
And the answer is, yes, we have to have a public hearing on the matter. It's, but that public hearing was set for today.
It was set for today?
Yes.
All right, well, let's go ahead, and I think there's motion second to suspend the rules, and we'll...
Just back up and do the public hearing, and then we'll do the motion to suspend rules. I withdraw my motion.
Either way, all right. The, before us now is the item before us, the establishment of the Cypress Crossing multi-purpose municipal property owners improvement district number 26 of North Little Rock. Public hearing is convened, it's been, I assume, noticed, and anyone care to comment on that at this time?
I'd just like to ask a question. Does this, establishing this owner's improvement district, does it establish a tax, or does this do anything to, for people to buy their property out there, where they can assess fees to the homeowner?
It does. These type of improvement districts require 100% approval of all property owners who own the property right now, and they must agree to the assessments, which will finance the improvements to the property, such as utility, streets, drainage, and such.
They being the homeowners, or they being the people that we're approving this district to?
They being the, right, the petitioners, 100% of the current property owners.
So, these individuals can now assess, when we do this, these individuals can assess the improvement district fees as they see fit? Is that what you're telling me?
Let me, I think, obviously, this is number 26. Does that then conclude we have 25 others of these that have gone before us?
Well, and that's a good question. That's, the best guess that we've got is that we're on number 26 right now. That's, we went with number 26 because that was the best guess that we had.
All right, let me see if I understand it then correctly. These are very regular tools that developers use when they come in, and in all likelihood, the 100% property owners is maybe one or two people.
Usually, there's not very many.
Not very many, and so what they do, they utilize these improvement districts to essentially finance improvements in the area, and they will be assessed against the real estate, and then they will come in and sell different lots, and those lots then will have these assessments that will essentially pay for improvements.
That's correct, and it'll all be a matter of record. I mean, owners won't take the property and then be surprised, "Oh, you mean, I bought this and I have to pay, you know, for improvements on it." They'll be aware that they do.
Alderman Bryant, are you finished?
Yeah.
Alderman Thomas?
Doesn't the law give them that right to do that anyway?
Yes.
Yes, that's right. I mean, if I understand right, this is something we have to do. We have to have the public hearings. I think the main thing we need to do is make sure we cross the Ts and dot the Is, so when they move forward, there's not a hiccup somewhere. The, I do have one question, and it refers to the petitioners in Section 1 as being Ruston W. Glover, Andrew Atkins, and David Dunn. The signer are Andrew Atkins, David Dunn, and Jim Glover. So, there's a difference in the petitioners and the people who, the people who sign the petition in the piece of paper attached and in the Section 1 unless Ruston W. Glover and Jim Glover is the same person.
Well, we got two very capable attorneys here. Mr. Bob Harden is in the audience, as well as our own city attorney. You know, I think the council is wanting to make sure that we, whatever action we take, is appropriate to accomplish what your desires are, so, you know, y'all want to let us know? Somebody want to answer Mr. Gibson's question?
I think the difference is the difference between a commissioner and a manager, that Mr. Dunn, and you can correct me if I'm misquoting the document, but I believe where it's cited, you're referring to the bottom of Page 2, where it identifies Mr. Ruston Glover, Mr. Andrew Atkins, and Mr. David Dunn as commissioners, then the signatures that are affixed are, I see...
Two of the three are the same.
The petitioners and commissioners can be entirely different.
Right.
And also, according to our minutes, we set a hearing for the second meeting in May for this.
We, and let me interject that, yes, according to our minutes, we set the meeting for the next meeting.
Yes.
Set our hearing.
Yes.
But by state law, we must have that hearing within 15 days. We have to have that hearing today, under state law.
Okay.
Unless we're going to call a special meeting. I mean, we could call a special meeting for it, but if we're not going to call...
I don't think any of us want to come back for this. Mr. Harden?
If I can't address it just a minute, the petitioner is actually an entity. It's Highway 165 Development LLC. It owns the entire property as indicated by an exhibit, which is a certificate from American Abstract Entitled Company, which attaches the deed of conveyance as well as part of the petition. The signers are all individual principals of these entities, and you can see the signatures. There's actually two entities that own that entity by reference, or are members, and the various individuals are signing in their representative capacities. You have to have individuals as commissioners, and therefore, we are asking that these three individuals, Ruston Glover, Andrew Atkins, and David Dunn, be appointed as the commissioners, even though the land itself is owned by an entity.
Okay. I understand. I don't want, I don't like to do these things twice.
Yes.
And we've had to do them twice, and I understand we have to have a public hearing, and we have to okay it, so I'm ready now to move forward.
Okay. Any other questions? We need to suspend the rules.
I'll move, suspend rules placed on second reading.
Second.
Motion made in second to suspend the rules. Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
Yes.
This is an ordinance establishing the Cypress Crossing multi-purpose municipal property owners improvement district number 26 of North Little Rock, second reading.
Move, suspend the rules, place it on the third reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
Yes.
Ordinance 0648, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is an ordinance allowing a special use for a body piercing shop in a C1 zone for certain real property located at 5100 JFK Boulevard, number 8, in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Let me indicate to the council, and I think the applicant's here. Is Ms. Ritchie here? You know, it's my understanding that the applicant has had a business in the Park Hill area for a number of years, and has gone before the planning commission. It was a favorable vote. Mr. Voels, what was that vote?
Seven to one.
Seven to one, to allow this special use, and I think we all could have, and I'm sure certainly do, have opinions on different kinds of body decoration. I don't think any of us probably would fault one for wanting to pursue their profession and to do it in an area that's basically similar to where they head. With that, I would certainly support this and put it before the council.
It's his legislation. I move, suspend rules, put it on the second reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
No.
This is an ordinance allowing a special use for a body piercing shop in a C1 zone for certain real property located at 5100 JFK Boulevard, number 8, in the city of North Little Rock, second reading.
I can move, suspend rules, and place it on the third reading in the ward of the people who put it in our ward.
Second.
On the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
No.
And Whitaker?
No.
This is an ordinance allowing a special use for a body piercing shop in a C1 zone for certain real property located at 5100 JFK Boulevard, number 8, in the city of North Little Rock, third and final reading.
On the question.
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
No.
And Whitaker?
No.
On the emergency, Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
No.
And Whitaker?
No.
Motion's adopted. Ms. Ritchie, we all know that beauty is in the eye of the beholder, and we certainly respect your profession, and the council has approved your request. You're welcome. Next item?
Ordinance 0649, Alderman Gibson.
Read it one time and hold it, please.
This is an ordinance prohibiting access to residential property across curbs and sidewalks, first reading.
Mayor, I believe that, what is the status of our second meeting in May? Is that going to be a...
Going to be on time, on schedule.
I'd like to call a public hearing for this one at the next meeting. I'm in no hurry to pass it. I think it needs to, there's probably one amendment, we're going to have to do it to it at least, and that's going to be that, where you have some repair services going on at your house, that those vehicles may be able to, should be able to back up, like if they're delivering air conditioners or something like that, appliances or something, to where they may have to jump a curb, but it's fully intended. We have been, we've had a long discussion in trying to count the number of new sidewalks and new curbs and gutters that we built in seven years, in the last seven years in North Little Rock, and it's very difficult to drive by and see parts of those deteriorate, simply because people choose to jump them, to pull up into their yards and park on a regular basis. And I know Mr. Thomas asked me about the roll curbs. If there's a sidewalk there, I still got the same problem with jumping a roll curb and doing that.
I guess, pardon me, the only question I had, is it a great enough problem? We need an ordinance for the whole city, affecting the whole city on this?
This one affects the whole city.
I know, but I haven't seen that problem, and I just wondered, in your areas, the area that you're speaking of, is it great enough that we need an ordinance prohibiting that?
Unless someone, I don't think a person should be able to jump a horizontal curb and pull up into their yards on a regular basis. There's, every one of these have a driveway, and if they'll enter on the driveway, the driveway is reinforced concrete, the sidewalk that's there is also reinforced. It's made to handle it. What's not made to handle it is people to continue in jumping curbs and going up in their yards. We spent, and you've spent a lot of money in your area, putting in sidewalks and putting in curbs and gutters, and is it a big enough problem? Yes, it's a big enough problem. I mean, if I could pass this and say, "You can't do this in Ward 1," but you can't do that. It has to affect everybody in the city, and we'll have an opportunity to start in the next meeting, and I'm in no hurry to pass it. This is a three or four-meeting piece of legislation.
I'm really concerned about, even if it's put in place, how we're going to police it.
You just have to do it simply by complaints from neighbors. How do we do most of the code enforcement stuff now?
Well, neighbors have to call in, but I'm with Mr. Thomas on this, you know. In our neighborhoods, a lot of curbs are the roll curbs, and many of our communities do not have sidewalks, so...
But, so, if, they're not going to be in violation of it, then?
So, they won't be...
But they should be, why can't they drive into their yard on a driveway? Drive into their piece of property on a driveway? Maybe you don't want, I don't like what we've got going on in part of our ward, but it's not part of our ward, it's also part of yours, to where you've got people who will absolutely pull up, go into their yard on any place, and you look at the curbs that are gone, and you wonder why those curbs are gone. We're spending money putting up new curbs and gutters, but we haven't gone in and replaced any of those old ones that have been beat down, and when we start doing that, and you find out the cost of doing it, it's going to be a real staggering figure.
So, I guess my question is...
Let me interrupt just a second. Let me go ahead, unless there's an objection, that we'll just go ahead. We've got two public hearings, this being the second one at the next council meeting. We'll do one after the other, and I would encourage people who this would affect to come and talk to us. With that, let's set this discussion aside for the next public hearing. That'll be at the next council meeting. Next, back to the agenda.
Ordinance 0650, Alderman Gibson.
Call it, please.
This is an ordinance allowing a special use for a daycare center in a R3 zone for certain real property located at 1608 Pike Avenue in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Mayor, this is one of those, it's between 16th and 17th, on Pike Avenue. It's got access from the back and from the front to the piece of property. I question, like everybody else, the need to have this many daycares under city, but planning commission went through the whole process, and an eight to one vote passed it. So, and this is the first one, and I appreciate planning putting this in there, Section 2F, a business license will not be issued until North Little Rock planning has confirmed that all requirements have been met. This means that it cannot open until they've done all of the things in regard to the landscaping and the driveways, and I must also let the person who's applied for it know, hours of not one that's going to try to pass this on the first meeting, I want to hold it.
Next item?
651, Alderman Gibson.
Call it, please.
This is an ordinance allowing a special use for a home daycare in a R3 zone for certain real property located at 1519 Share Street in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Hold it, please.
Ordinance S-652, Alderman Gibson.
Read that, please.
This is an ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for long-term disability income protection insurance coverage for non-uniform employees of the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Gentlemen, in the 2005 budget, we included the money for long-term disability for our non-uniform employees. We, our uniformed officers were police and fire, have long-term disability as part of their pension plan. Our non-uniform employees do not have that same protection. The, through the municipal league, there's been a statewide program put together that would do this, which cuts the rate about by two-thirds of what an individual policy costs, and so I have no intentions of putting this in effect before July 1st, but I would like to put it on the second reading tonight and hold it and discuss it more at the next meeting. So, spin rules, place on the second reading.
Third, second?
Second.
Second. Let's go ahead and deal with this, and then anybody has any questions. On the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
This is an ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for long-term disability income protection insurance coverage for non-uniform employees of the city of North Little Rock, second reading.
Questions? Alderman, Thomas?
I guess the only thing I had, I'm sure there's a reason, but what advantage do we have to waive the bidding? I guess I thought that that would maybe get the price down or something.
Mr. Sisson, we did, in essence, there was a committee of municipal league that took proposals from like 25 companies, and they narrowed that down to three, and the rates were in the about 75 or 76 cents when we started.
Yes, correct.
And when we got through with it, the rates were in the 50 cent range.
Right, I believe just a little bit below 50 cents, a hundred, right. The bids have been taken, it was just taken through municipal league, Arkansas Municipal League. I don't know if I still understand that.
Alderman, Thomas, let me tell you what I know about this. All right, I spent several years in disability income protection business with a Paul Revere, and the Paul Revere was bought out by Providence several years ago, and then Unum bought out Providence. You talk about the company that's the biggest of the big in this business. It's going to be Unum Providence, and they've got the client base to substantiate the low rates that they offer. Simple as that.
So this is, this is a good deal, is what you're saying?
This, this company right here is probably going to offer as good a deal as you'll find anywhere on disability income protection for municipalities, and there's not a lot of companies that like to do business with municipalities.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, you're saying that's 25 cents lower than, than its next competitor already?
I can't say exactly that it was significantly lower.
We have employees that are paying as much as a dollar and 50 per hundred.
About a dollar and 70, there's about.
About a dollar and 70 for an individual policy, and for that same, and for 50 cents or 52 cents, Bob?
I think it's 51 or 52.
In that neighborhood, so it's, it's, it's two-thirds less than the individual policy that they're having to pay out of their pocket now. But my, my whole situation, I've said this before, is that we've got to continue to work to bring our non-uniform employees to have at least some of the benefits, or most of the benefits that our uniform employees have. The police and fire are covered through their pension plan, which we pay for, and this is what I want us to do with this, is a, it's a perk that I think our city employees need.
Where are we right now?
Spin rules two times.
I just want to say one other thing.
Okay, Alderman.
I certainly want to do that too, if, if that's what the non-uniform want. That's what they want, the employees, the people that's being affected here, that's what they would like, is that?
They would like to have the city to pay for a long-term disability. One of the toughest decisions-
And they want us to waive the bidding?
I didn't ask them about waiving the bidding, but they want, they want the plan. The other thing that brings into it is the hardest decision that we've had to make in this council over the many years, is someone that doesn't get hurt on the job, but gets hurt otherwise. They've got a family, and this plan will, the good part about Unum, which I call them, I don't know the real name, the whole name, is that 60% of their, of their salary is a, is a disability pension, but they also have plans to set in their place to help train them to do something else. So it, they don't want to, they don't want them to stay on disability the rest of their life, but they want to train them to do something else. Maybe they, and I can tell you in a heartbeat, I know what it's like to not know if you're going to move again for the rest of your life, laying in a soybean field for two and a half hours. This was, this was even in place three months before I had my rec. The bid and procedure was already there, but it, whether there are linemen in the police, in the electric department, or a signalman in the traffic department, what happens, if they get hurt on the job, they've got some distinct coverage. If they get hurt not on the job, they have a period of time and they're out on the streets, and their families, and that's not fair to do for the long-term employees. And that's why that we prefaced it, the city pays for it, we pay for the police and fire, we should pay for theirs, and so, since the employee's not paying for it, I don't know what I need to be concerned about, whether they want us to waive competitive bids or not. We spent almost two years in this process of getting the bids down. It's underwritten by Stevens and Providence.
Alderman, this, this is the same insurance, Unum, that the employees that have it pay for it themselves. We took bids several years ago and selected Unum if the employees want to pay for it themselves, so this is the same company. That, Unum was the only one back then that, that really bid on our, on our disability. So, so what you're telling me, the non-uniform, they're going to be happy with this, and that's what I want to, to make sure that they are? Again, I can't, there's no reason they wouldn't be happy, Alderman. I mean, I, I, there's, they're getting a benefit. The ones who are paying for it now, which is about 40 of them, will get a benefit, the city will have to pay for it. The rest of them will get a benefit that they have not had before. They were the ones I was concerned about, so that's fine.
Okay, where are we, Alderman? Alderman Gibson, you said you wanted to hold it now? Alderman Gibson?
He did.
I'm holding, I'm holding it.
Okay. Mayor, may I ask?
Mr. Carter brought up a valid point, though, that, in regard to the waiving of, was whether municipal league advertised for proposals and got pages and pages of them, and they cut that down to five, and then actually five and then three, and one of the three bailed out when they got down to, to that.
So you're really not waiving bids?
So the point is, whenever we prepared the legislation, I wasn't familiar that they went through that process. If they've gone through that process, you're not waiving bids, you've complied with the bidding statute.
Okay.
Right, it's, we're doing it via the municipal league, but bidding has still been complied with. There's no necessity to waive it.
Similar to what we do on a fairly regular basis when we go to the state bid.
Correct.
For different kinds of items. Alderman Gibson's holding it, so you might want to polish it a little bit.
We'll do is polish it up for the next meeting. The whole thing is, I'd like to get it passed sometime before the 1st of June, if possible, which gives the city a month to get everybody signed up before it goes into.
That's correct. We do that much.
There's beneficiaries and all those other kind of things you got to get signed up.
All right, it's being held. I think that's the last item on the agenda. Any council member? Make announcements?
Just time to make announcements, you know, wait.
Make announcements, Mr. Height?
Oh, thank you. I wanted to bring up National Ride Your Bike to Work Day, Friday, May 8th, 19th, Friday, May 19th, leaving from Burns Park Soccer Complex, down the River Trail and over to the Broadway Bridge, and then rendezvous with the Little Rock group that's leaving from Murray Park, and it's been rumored that the mayor is going to be riding that morning, and that's just a rumor.
It may, it may, we may have a schedule problem, and rumor may not prove to be accurate, so we'll just have to, we'll have to see. Any other council member?
A couple others, Mayor. The, the annual Powell Golf Tournament at Burns Park will be this Friday, May the 12th, and they can contact Ms. Robbins in the city clerk's office, and she'll fix them up with a, with a golf date. Also, the Boys and Girls Club BBQ is Thursday, the 18th. I think we have the 19th on our, on our agenda, and then, of course, the Buzz BBQ is the weekend before River Fest, May 20th, and Michael Drake has the information about that.
And they're looking for volunteers. Bryant, and then Alderman Robinson?
Like to invite everyone, May the 11th, at Burns Park Tennis Facility is going to be the dedication. The Arkansas Tennis Association and the city will be dedicating the new courts and the facility out there. Stan Smith, if those of you who play tennis and are familiar with it, Stan Smith is coming into town for that dedication, so I'd like to invite all those who would like to come out. It'll be, I think, at 5:00 on May the 11th. That's this Thursday at Burns Park Tennis Facility.
Alderman Robinson, then Alderman Gibson.
Like to see Chief Bradley after the meeting.
Chief Bradley. Alderman Gibson.
Like to notify everybody, today was the first day of voting. You can go to Lehman Library. I was absolutely surprised. I guess it was the biggest secret in town. They need customers down there, and I'm sure the general public is going to be, well, probably, once they know about it, they will flood like they normally do. I understand that June 22nd has been the date set for the dedication of the Argenta Library on Main Street at the old fire station history house, and that notification will come out.
One final thing. I'd like for Attorney Carter to kind of update our viewing audience regarding the mobile home on Boyer, the status of that.
Of course, we engage in litigation over that property. The city was successful, and we have an order in hand for the house to be moved. And I'd like to tell you exactly what the timeframe is on that, but I just don't have that in my brain right now, and I can update you on it later.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I do have one other thing.
All right, then Alderman Parker.
I think publicly, I'm going to make an offer to, to my fellow seatmate, to see if we can collaborate, to see about getting gift certificates for body piercing for some of my fellow council members to come visit Ward Four, and we'll make every effort to see what we can do if either you or your spouse is interested in doing that, or your granddaughters, Mayor.
Not for a while, I can tell you that. And Mayor, if I may, I just wanted to thank all the other council for establishing the codes as far as a retail makeup in Ward Four tonight, for them deciding what type of retail establishment to go up there on John F. Kennedy Boulevard. Thank you.
I think maybe perhaps if we need something that isn't hair services, and looking at the two of y'all and looking in the mirror this morning, if we had someone that could place hair on our heads, it would be a lot better.
I concur.
Let me, let me bring us back to reality, and, and speaking of economic development, I know most of us have a memo from Todd Larson, who's the executive director of the North Rock Economic Development Corporation. This Wednesday, May 10th, 10:00, the Bank of the Ozarks Conference Center, the North Little Rock Chamber of Commerce in our city, along with the Economic Development Corporation, and Arkansas Department of Economic Development will announce a significant addition to our city, and we're inviting anyone that might want to come and be a part of that, to come to the Bank of the Ozarks Conference Center and the North Little Rock Chamber. With that, the microphone's open.
Mayor, I got a comment.
I'm sorry, Alderman Parker, I saw you and then forgot.
I just wanted everyone to know that we save the best for last, and I would like to publicly thank our community relations director, Margaret Powell, for putting it together another fantastic weekend of cleaning up North Little Rock. This past Saturday, from 8:30 to 12:30, we had a breakfast sort of donut cook-off, I mean kickoff, with a pizza party at the end, and although we didn't have as many participants this year as we had the previous year, it was still a overwhelming success even with the inclement weather. I want to remind everybody in North Little Rock that participated, how much we appreciate their involvement, including Alderwoman Robinson for being there, showing support for her ward and her community participants. There was a large contingency from both her ward and, and although there wasn't many from my particular ward, yours truly was there holding down the fort. We are looking for a lot of community involvement with keeping our city beautiful. We've got a new appendant organization affiliate that's being created now called Keep North Little Rock Beautiful that is an affiliate of the Keep America Beautiful Organization, and hopefully they'll be in full stride by this time next year, but keeping North Little Rock Beautiful is a 365-day-a-year job, and everybody that participated this last Saturday, I just want to thank you once again, and look forward to working with you on a day-in, day-out basis. It's not something we do once a year, it's something we do every day. It's part of our lifestyle, and hopefully it'll pay dividends in the long run. Thanks again.
And thanks, Alderman Parker, for being a part of it, and we underline our appreciation. I know the weather was a little challenging, and yet we, we hope the lesson continues 365.7.
Yes, my name's Matthew Richard, live here in Argenta, and I wanted to commend the council on the pace for tonight's meeting. I thought it was quite judicious to not read the electric rates ordinance when no such rates are actually specified yet, and I hope that will be read three times over three meetings, once those rates are determined. On another note, I understand the 15-day ruling on the hearing and so on. And just as a member of the public, if I was reading the minutes of a previous meeting that said I should come on the second meeting in May to attend a hearing before legislation is passed, even if technically the meeting, the public hearing, had to be held the previous meeting, I would prefer the final vote to have been held on the day of the announced public hearing. Again, most of us only have access to the minutes. I don't know where that public hearing notice was. It's not in the printout, it's not on the website, so maybe it was in the newspaper, but, and I realize that was sort of a pocket deal, but I think it'd be best to hold the final vote on the day of the announced public hearing at least. Thank you.
Mayor Hayes, council. Scott Miller, representing the Argenta Neighborhood Boosters. I want to personally thank, as a group, thank Alderman Thomas and Alderwoman Robinson for the appropriation from the drainage money, as well as the city council for their vote. The Argenta Boosters have long been a leader in the community, formation of the CDC, urban reforestation, no parking in front yards, but I'm sure that'll come up in the next week, but that we did in our, in our neighborhood as well, or at the next meeting, excuse me. I want to thank you and realize that what you voted for tonight was basically entrance signs into every street corner off the Argenta Historic District, as well as replacing all of the individual street signs within the district, similar to what's done on JFK. The only difference is it'll be throughout the Argenta Historic area. And then I want to urge you all, drive through the neighborhood. You would be absolutely amazed. Houses now are appraising $90 to $100 a square foot. Last sale was two weeks ago, less than a week on the market, $180,000 for 1,600 square foot homes in Argenta. It's a wonderful success story due to the efforts of y'all to preserve this neighborhood, and I wanted to thank you all for that effort, and thank you specifically Alderman Robinson and Alderman Thomas. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm Jim Ard. We need to also thank Eddie Powell for the cleanup Saturday. A special thanks to Ron Osborne. You can call on him when you need something quickly. He jumps to the task. Also, I'd like to thank the North Little Rock School District. We is needing some microphone stands, and no one in the city seemed to know where any was, so they was very helpful and no problem barring them. Mr. Anderson, who spoke to y'all several weeks ago over a situation with a contract with someone, seems to have the impression, because he's not a citizen of North Little Rock, he's not to come down and express his feelings. I hope that someone did not share with him, he should not be doing this. I feel he had a just gripe. I know personally I was overcharged, and I don't know what I'm going to do about it yet. I'm still thinking. Also, Mayor, behind every successful mayor, there has to be a secretary.
There is, a very successful one, and if you're going to talk about my secretary-
Oh, it's a good one.
You better be accurate.
Okay. It's my understanding that it was her idea for us to go riding on the boat for the thank you for the volunteers.
Remember now, be accurate in what you say.
I say it's my understanding that it was her idea for us to go riding on the riverboat for the thank you for the volunteers.
That, that's correct.
I get around, don't I? I enjoyed it very much. One of the council members made a comment I didn't think was appropriate, but I'll forgive him. You know, it's, it's not right, and I'm having a hard time dealing with this. We had a council member's child call my mother's home and do terroristic threatening. If I start crying, it's because I think it's a sad thing, because he was upset. He wanted to call up my mother's home to do terroristic threatening.
Mr. Ard, you need to be careful of what you say.
I am, sir. We've got it on tape. I thought it would go away, but apparently it's not. I tried to apologize several meetings ago if I upset him, and the comment that was made, "I thought the boat missed you." I didn't feel it was acceptable. I'm not sorry I said this tonight. I have been upset ever since it happened. My mother is 89 years old, and that isn't right for someone to call up your house and do that. I'm going to end this with a prayer, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Sir, you never find me objecting to a prayer.
Father in heaven, we thank thee for this council. We thank thee for all the great things they do. They can make mistakes like anyone else. Members of their family can make mistakes like anyone else. I have a hard time forgiving sometimes, but I'm going to try faithfully to forgive the person that made the comment and the relative of their family that did the terroristic threatening. I hope everyone will accept this in the manner which I intended it, in Jesus's name. Amen.
There's our motion. On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Robert.